Could resume our meetings back.
Well, the sheriff was set to open the buildings at the end of March, but then we started to see the plateau in the number of cases and then it started to go actually back up and then, you know, we started to get some in the jail again. So we've postponed that for the time being. Um, I would guess that maybe toward the end of April, May, he'll reevaluate that and uh, you know, I'd say here in the next couple of months, we'll, we'll have a clear direction.
Okay, okay. Um, cause until then I'll probably try to have something outside in uh, my own yard. So that'll be fine. Um, I did want to um, also bring up the speeding that I know uh, they touched on and uh, but on Derby, they're flying uh, down that street. Cosin and Liscum, which I'm sure you all know about that intersection. It's really bad. They fly from those apartments up here on Germantown. They go straight through the stop sign. Don't even stop. Um, so they're, they're speeding like crazy. Um, and I was wondering if um, at some point, maybe one of those um, speed uh, um, trap things can be set up. They are just, I don't know that it'll stop them, but you know, it might slow them down some.
We'll get the uh, alright, we'll get the speed trailer out uh, here shortly. It just came back from uh, getting kind of an overhaul during the winter. Um, so we'll, we'll get that out here in the next uh, week or so, um, and start setting it up in some of these areas to see if that helps uh, to deter some of it. Um, we just did our uh, radar calibrations for all the cruisers. Um, I just got those back Friday. So um, we'll, we gotta finish reinstalling all those and then uh, we'll have some cars go out and do some stationary radar as well.
Okay, okay. And um, was there like, I, I heard that there was a shooting, um, well, I guess the victim actually ran on Derby or somewhere uh, from the known house on Altrum. Was there some kind of, some kind of arrest or some, what happened to that person or?
A shooting uh, when are we, when are we talking? What timeframe? I'm not aware of any recent shooting.
I think Marion, was it, was it last week?
Yep.
Yeah, it was last week. Um, I think it was a girl who she might've been trying to go buy some drugs and I think some kind of shooting took place and she ended up on another street and.
On Derby.
And some people had to call the poli, I mean, call the paramedics, I think it was.
Hmm, are we sure it was a shooting? Maybe an assault?
Could've been both, but like I said, I heard a lady screaming out.
Okay.
Okay, it's good. It might've been assault, but it was some of the, some of the members of the group reported that and I was just, I didn't hear you mention that when you gave your report. So I was just trying to follow back up on that. Cause I evidently that person didn't live out here, so.
Okay, um, if it, if it happened in April, I was just giving kind of like the uh, I, I kind of give the month previous. Um, when I do the report, so um, I, I, I'm supposed to be notified of anything that happens shooting wise and I, and I have it. That's the only reason uh, uh, I'm thinking maybe it's an assault or something.
Okay.
But uh, I will, I will find out and I'll let you know.
Okay, and then one last thing. I, I know you just said that uh, you guys weren't gonna give tickets and I don't, I'm not stating this for people to get tickets or anything right off, but the summer has started or spring started and people are cutting their grass and you know, they're blowing it out into the street. And I know that's against the law. Um, is there any way, I, I know that you can't do it in all cases. I understand some, the, the priority in situations. But is there any way that they can give like a warning to the property owner to let them know, you know, hey, this is against the law. I'm giving you a warning, you know, and kind of follow up with that because if there's like no, uh, i- i- if, if it's not even acknowledged that there's an issue, then people will continue to blow it out. And it seems like every year, more and more people are blowing their, their grass out into the street. And then if it gets wet, you know, that issue with people sliding on it, accident.
I haven't, you know, I've been involved in uh, two fatal crash investigations as a ro- result of this issue. So when I see somebody depositing a significant amount of grass debris in the roadway, I, I, I even stop and get out and knock on their door.
Thank you.
So that is definitely something that we can and we do do. Uh, the, the end of the day, um, you know, it's, it's a littering type complaint, um, but uh, but we all know what potential it has to uh, uh, injure and, 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 you know, especially motorcyclists. Um, it's a very dangerous thing for them.
Right, right, right. I get it. Thank you. Uh, did you guys do the Easter egg hunt?
We did the drive-through, um, drive-through style this year. It was uh, it was kind of a low turnout and uh, you know, thanks to the fire department for coming out and assisting us with that, but uh, um, you know, just kind of, kind of getting our feet back in the water and hopefully they'll uh, pick back up next year.
Okay, well, thank you all for doing that.
You're welcome.
Years old, so I, I couldn't come. I have a question, um, Captain Fluck.
Uh huh.
My neighbor, um, uh, I know that I probably should go and talk to him, but I don't like, you know, it's bad blood, but how can you suggest how I should go over there to tell him about his dog barking all along? I'm here all day because of course I'm retired and I work from home. And as soon as they leave, she will bark until the mailman comes. She'll bark when it goes up the street, back the street. And anybody that comes down the street, she barks, barks, barks. As long as, you know, they have her outside, they leave her, they leave, they go to work or wherever. And she barking, barking, barking and, you know, there's two kinds of bark dog do. I know that, but I know this is one this morning, somebody there, but it's annoying. And I, and uh, I'm trying to figure out a way to go to my neighbors and tell them about this, without having bad blood with my neighbors. As well as every time when neighbor comes home, he blasts his music loud. I mean, I, it's okay if it's loud, but I mean, this is extremely loud. It scares you. In my house, my bedroom is on the side of their gr- their driveway. So I don't know, is there a way or something I should do or how she approaches or should I even approach her? Um, to tell them about this.
If, if you're comfortable with them and you have a, you know, a rapport where you can go over and have that conversation, you know, it's always, you know, best to do that. And I know a lot of people appreciate it when uh, you know, somebody they know, at least I hear them say that a lot when we go out on things, you know, hey, you should've just came and, you know, said something to me, told me. Um, i- i- if that's something that you're not comfortable doing, you know, and the music's blaring, you know, call us, we'll go over and knock on the door for you. Um, if you just want to send me the uh, uh, in- information, I'll just have somebody go over and have a general talk. Um, you know, at, at the end of the day, we do have the noise ordinance and you know, that kind of persistent behavior can, can eventually constitute uh, uh, a, a point in time where you just, you don't, you're not left with options other than citing somebody into court. But uh, you know, we also have mediation type things at our disposal. If, if, if it's something that fits that, better than a, you know, a summons or something would, but uh, just whatever you're comfortable with and let me know and we'll, we'll help you out with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, fire report?
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees and citizens, guests. Appreciate you coming tonight. Uh, as you press in on the news, we had uh, two fires the last two evenings on Knox Avenue, the abandoned school. Uh, it is under investigation. Always suspicious when you have a structure that's abandoned and has no power to it. So we're asking anyone that might've seen anything to please contact the sheriff's office to pass on to the investigators. Uh, chief will be meeting with the fair board this week uh, for logistics with the uh, upcoming Montgomery County Fair and the fire department service. We've got one medic, one ambulance down right now, uh, waiting on a part to be delivered, but we still have two medics in service. Two smoke detectors were recently installed over last week uh, in citizens' homes. And two fire inspections were conducted in the commercial buildings. Uh, the chief's vehicle's been moved from the Ford dealership to the vendor that will be doing the lights and sirens installation. Then on to the striping company to get it lettered and then back to the chief. Uh, this COVID has slowed everything down at every level of this process. Between the making the car and getting it uh, getting it equipped and decked out with everything it needs. Uh, thank you to the trustees for voting on the uh, new employees tonight. Uh, two of them have indicated they would be taking random shifts sporadically throughout the weeks and the months. While three of them have picked up shifted either every six days or committing to a specific day, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, each week. So we're, we're very fortunate to have them. Um, I was driving in several of the plaques today, uh, following up on uh, some complaints. And it was uh, very heartwarming to have the citizens out working in their yards, waving us down, stopping us and thanking us for our service. So we do, do appreciate their uh, uh, their attitude towards the fire department. Uh, any questions from the trustees?
Just.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes department reports. Comments by citizens. Comments by citizens wishing to address the board of trustees. And this is the rules for in-person meeting. So must sign and complete an attendance sheet, speaker list, and fully complete a speaker's form and hand it in before the start of the meeting. Citizens must include name, address, contact phone number and a full description of the comment. If the above required items are not requ- are not completed, trustees will not permit the citizen to address the trustees. A citizen is only permitted to address the trustees one time with no rebuttal provided. A citizen is limited to three minutes to address the trustees. The Ohio Revade Code provides trustees a reservation of rights to prohibit public comment and/or limit comments to maintain order in the meeting. Mr. Fletcher, probably the easiest thing is to get a copy of our agenda. The way that we've been doing it for Zoom meetings is we need to have you read your name, address, and telephone number if, if, if you have a complaint for the trustees. So we got a way to follow up with you. Uh, but we need that so that we can get that entered into the record. Does that clarify the rules for you?
Somewhat. Now, do I get to speak?
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Alright, good. And please don't cut me off and then, don't shut the mic off. But the thing is that it would've been nice if you had explained that earlier. And it's kind of disappointing because you actually, you represent the township, right? So, so you, you represent the township and this was my very first meeting. I got, meeting said six forty-five, so I got here fifteen minutes. You sat there fifteen minutes and you did not address me, you didn't say anything. Which that's, that's unprofessional and that's wrong on every level because I live over here. I'm, I am someone in this community and you didn't take enough time, energy or effort to even see who I was or why I was, you know, even in the meeting. That's not right. And so, you know, we, we need to, you guys, my suggestion is you need to revisit collectively as a group and figure out how we can, you know, inclusive and inviting to individuals that live in the community. You, I mean, you, that's not how we should be operating. And you know, if that is the, the, the very first um, impression that, you know, I get, then that's probably the same thing that everyone else is getting. So let's make it a lot more inviting and maybe more people will, you know, come and, you know, to these meetings and actually participate. And an- another thing that I noticed, when I did ask a question, you acted at the time as if it was beneath you to, you know, to even go over the protocol, like you couldn't stop for a second. And, and answer that. So, you know, with, that, that, that's un, that doesn't make sense. And then there, there are portions of the meeting where you guys are, you, you seem disengaged. Especially you and the treasurer. And it's not to just knock you down or, you know, anything like that. It's not a vending session. I'm just observing what I've seen just today. And so I'm, you know, at this point, it, we have a lot of issues in this community and they need to be solved and, and fixed and, you know, there are individuals in this community that are, you know, they're willing to work with you all, but you have to meet us halfway and what I've seen today, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's, you know, there's a, a, a meeting us halfway because I mean, with the, the attitude, you know, you and the treasurer seem disengaged and somewhat not even competent to do your jobs. So I'm just gonna put it out there. You don't seem competent. You nor the, not the treasurer, yeah, the treasurer. You, you, you just don't. And I, I'm not even sure that you even care about the community. And that's probably why we're having or experiencing some of the problems that we're having.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm gonna continue to come to these meetings and muting someone, come on now. This, that, that does not make sense. That's ridiculous. You, you want to, instead of you explaining, you ask someone to cut a mic off. Now, I could see if I was using profanity or being disrespectful. I asked you a question. So I mean, if you can't handle a question, you should not be in that position because people in this community, we should be asking questions.
And you have, at this point in our meetings, you have, this is when you have your opportunity to ask questions or you can reach out to the trustees directly. Uh, to address the fifteen minutes before the meeting, we, I didn't speak because we're working on getting everybody logged in. As you know, our work session didn't go off because we couldn't get anybody logged in. So we had some technical issues. Secondly, this is the first time that we've actually had a decent showing from citizens in there, so.
You should've been happy then. Now, I would have, if I was in your role, the first thing I would've said was, hey, who are you? You know, I, I would've been asking about you. I would've won. I, I would've been inviting. Do, do you think, is, is, does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
No, does that make sense? I, I'm asking you a question.
Well, if you had an in-person meeting, you may or may not have interaction before the meeting. So I get what you're saying. So uh, I apologize you were turned off by our first meeting. But uh, having all this technology, it's been a challenge for everybody. So um, the law, this is the board of trustees meetings. It's not a public forum. You've got the right to listen. You've got the right to record, but you're not guaranteed the right to be heard. But this is something that we build into our meetings.
Then, then, then you, then if we do not have the right to be heard, then we need to start looking at the policies because that can be changed. That makes no sense at all.
Well, like our work sessions, we don't have public comments during our work session. That's purely the elected officials doing work. So public comment is not always part of our, public comment's not always part of our meetings. So you need to understand that.
And what you need to understand, see, you, you don't know who you're talking to. You're not the only one. I, I sit in a lot of different meetings and you chairing a meeting, this is one of the worst meetings I've ever seen chaired. So you need to step your game up. And if silencing people, you know, oh, you, you trying to elude and evade things. You, you, you quick to tell me and this group on what we cannot do. Why don't you start telling us what we can do to make things better? Or why don't, why, why aren't you working that way? You quick to tell me, oh, you can't do this, shut off the mic.
Well, if you interrupt the meeting, we have to cut you off so we can de- conduct business. So you're entitled to your opinion. I'm not gonna argue this with you.
A question is an interruption?
One-on-one, that's fine.
So when did questions become interruptions? I could see if I was asking some frivolous, but if I'm asking a question about the conversation at hand, how is that an interruption?
You have the citizens' comment portion to address the trustees and ask those questions, but not while we're having a floor debate on an issue. So that is the rules of our meeting. I'm sorry you disagree with it.
Maybe we should change those rules then.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes, sir.
This is Trustee McLaughlin. If you have a pen, my number is nine three seven, seven seven six, oh nine eight nine. Call me anytime you want.
Uh, uh, I have tried to speak to you.
Yes, you have.
You know.
We have spoke and we, and yes, we have spoken.
My husband.
And yes, we have spoken.
Because it's the only person that's been cooperative, has actually been Captain Flag. And when I've sent him about the noise complaint, everything that Ms. Perry was talking about, Captain Flag was the only one who's reached out to me. I even said in that to Captain Flag and all the trustees, that if I didn't get some kind of type of resolution, that I don't have a problem going to Representative Willis Blackshear about the things uh, Ms. Perry was talking about, or going to channel two, seven or twenty-two. Neither. So I don't, I don't, other than Captain Flag, you know, I'm frustrated like uh, Randall. I am, I am so close. I'm not kidding. I will contact, I have his name right here along with you guys' names, channel seven, two, twenty-two and Representative uh, Blackshear. Like I said, the only one that's been cooperative, um, has been Captain Flag and Captain Flag, thank you. Uh, I, I reached out to the representatives to try to get the noises uh, uh, talked about. When I, when I talked to Captain Flag, I sent an email to everyone. No one has responded other than Captain Flag. That is ridiculous. I agree with Randall. If you all cannot do the job, then we need to find some people who can. And I, as a citizen, should not have to go to uh, Willis Blackshear or Fred Strayhorn to get a resolution. And I'm, I'm serious. You mark my words. If we don't start seeing some results, that's exactly what I'm gonna do. That's my right. And Captain Flag, I appreciate you so very much for at least wanting to have a conversation other than McGuire. No one else reached out to me, Captain Flag, other than you. And that's a doggone shame. I pay my taxes and what, and, and I'm gonna tell you something. Where's my tax money going if you are gonna listen? And I, I, I grew out, grew up out here, so I know the landscape and all the bad trustees and the money not being appropriated the way it should. This is ridiculous. If you all cannot help us out here, then you need to resign and let other people who give a crap about Jefferson Township and their citizens.
Call me, please. When you have, when you have a question or problem, call me, please.
Thank you. I will. And Chief, thank you and Captain Flag, thank you.
Yes, Captain Flag, thank you so much. I appreciate you having your time.
Mr. Mann and Mr. McGuire, get used to seeing me. Alright? Okay.
Oh, can I say, suggest one more thing?
Hold on.
I go, I go to.
Are you gonna make a comment? Are you gonna make a comment, Mary? Read your name and address into the record.
Marion C. Perry, fifty-one forty Altrum Road, Dayton, Ohio, zip code four five four one seven, which I don't appreciate. But here goes a nutshell. I go to channel two, I go to, I leave channel seven out and I go to channel twenty-two because they used to be out here. Now, all we want is what we grew up to have, what my parents had. We want the respect, the peace and quiet, but we got plants on our streets. The plants is what I call for undesirables who, thanks to some idiot, gave everybody or when they go to the uh, county and get our zip code and our property information and our property taxes. Next thing you know, we're getting cards talking about, oh, do you wanna buy your, we wanna buy your house. And I'm tired of that bull crap. I am tired of it. I don't, I know they get it from the county. I don't know who's helping them, but I got news for you. If you're helping them or whoever is helping them, if they leave, if they don't leave me alone, I'm gonna be including some people in a lawsuit for harassment. Cause I'm tired of the bull. I'm tired. And I'm tired of the plants I gotta have in the neighborhood who do not represent this township. They do everything to tear it down. They have their kids throwing trash in the yard. They have people throwing trash in my yard. I ain't done nothing to them, but they throw their darn trash in my yard. Now, at my age, I gotta stoop and pick it up. I'm not ready to move. And when I'm ready to move, I'll let them know. But who's ever helped them better know this. I am not the one. Cause if they do it one more time, I don't have the money. But if I have to, I'll hire a lawyer and I'll make him find out who's pestering the hell out of me. I mean that. This is a nice county and it's a quiet community. And that's all we want. That's what we want. Quiet. We don't wanna be harassed. We don't wanna be hitemized. We don't wanna be tuck down like babies. Oh, I sent you the postcard because I thought we could help you out. I don't need your help. Leave me alone. So either, you know, Jim, like they said, we need trustees who care. We really need people who understand that as you get older, you have a house that was given to you per the death of relatives. That's how I got this one. And I got it because of a divorce, because of domestic violence. I had nowhere to go and if it weren't for my grandmother, I would be on the street. But I grew up on this street in this house and I don't need people bothering me. Do you understand me? And I'm not lying. And as far as that stuff, talking about we need to sign in, how are we gonna do this thing to the coronavirus? You know, I always talk. So how am I gonna get a form from where you moved from to, to voice my opinions?
Well, that's why we're having you read it into the record for, because they're recording these meetings.
Yeah, I know. I see.
Okay.
But I see it. You don't understand. They're not pestering you. They're pestering the people on, okay? From Derby Road, everything behind Derby and everything on King Belane and up. And then they move in undesirables as a way to get us out of here. And that's not fair. Not fair. Then you can't get them out because you, the sheriff can't do anything. And IRS and some other things, because that thing is illegal. That chop shop is illegal. They raise and board pit bulls. And then their neighbors raise and breed cane corso's. If you've never seen a cane corso, just think about a horse. And the one lady called me, oh, I spent two hundred dollars. I got a small dog. Those dogs would eat my dog. And the minute that happens, it's a free for all. So either y'all get on the ball or the citizens of Jefferson Township are gonna get a little upset. Cause on this street, there's a lot of people with small dogs. And the minute one of those big dogs eat my dog, guess what? I'm coming after the township. I'm coming after the sheriff and I'm coming after the trustees. And if I get hurt, you know I'm coming after the trustees. And I'm not playing. I lived out in California for six years and I know what they'll do in a heartbeat. It's called Sue City. Now, I'm telling you, either you do your job or you don't. But election time. If people getting sick and, sick and tired of being sick and tired, you know what's gonna happen, right? Cause I am a registered voter. I don't sit on my derriere when they say it's time for us to vote. And I mean that. That's it.
Hello, uh, Sheila Back, um, seventeen hundred Alamo Court. Um, so I noticed on the, I, I did wanna tell Mr. Fletcher that the agenda is on the website. So whenever they have the meeting, you can go to the website and it'll have the agenda and you can uh, be able to follow along with what's going on during the meeting. But I too was trying to get to the work session, but uh, as he, I guess said that for whatever reason, it, it didn't happen today. So, uh, but they will have the agenda on there. So you'll be able to get that and seek, follow along. Um, I do, I didn't hear any reports from the zoning department, the road department, um, or code enforcement. So what, there was no reports from those departments?
They just weren't sure they weren't at the meeting. There are written reports. If you want to contact Adrian, she can email them over to you.
Okay, um, um, I've been, uh, I do have a couple of things. Okay, um, um, I've been, uh, I do have a couple things, the road department, is there a specific project or something they're working on, on the weekends specifically this past weekend?
I'm not aware of a specific project.
Well, I'm asking that question because I happen to notice that road, uh, department in the truck, he just kinda casually came back into the cul-de-sac and, and, uh, was riding around, and I know we pay them overtime for working on the weekends, so I can't, for the life of me, understand if there is not a designated project that they are working on, uh, that they can't do during the week, why are we paying them overtime to ride around?
Yeah, well, that's not true, that's a part-time seasonal employee that works, his schedule, his evenings and weekends, his role is, a lot of it is supporting the daytime road staff with repairs on equipment, I've seen him driving the roadside tractors when they, when they do that, um, he's also given a support, but it's not an overtime situation, it's a part-time seasonal, or actually, I think he's a, just a part-time employee now.
Oh, so you know who I'm talking about?
Yeah, his name's Griff.
Oh, Griff, okay, okay.
He's actually, um, he's actually listening in right now.
Okay, so, so Griff is part-time, so he works on the weekend?
Right.
Okay, okay, well, I, I, I just needed to clarify that because, uh, I wasn't sure, I thought they all worked Monday through Friday, but we have somebody that works on the weekend, okay, so I got that, now, the, uh, was it the code enforcement, uh, that resigned?
No, that was Mr. Calligan zoning, so fences, garages, uh, garage setbacks, signs.
Okay, so do we, do we have anybody that we're looking at to replace him, because, um, I, I don't know if you all even come this way, but where the old Rens used to be, where Raj owns his property on Derby and Germantown, they're dumping up there, and I, and I know they're dumping because you see little piles of, uh, uh, cement where they've dug it up and you see fresh grass, uh, that's included in that, that pile, so not only are they dumping, but they're also coming up and getting, um, sand and, um, taking it to wherever they go, is that property zoned for that?
I have no idea at this point.
Wasn't that a commercial, uh, facility at one time, but if it's still kinda commercial z- zoning?